I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first three speakers will be Ms. Pamela Harbin, Ms. Teresa Calazie, and Rachel Castillo. Ms. Harbin?
My name is Pamela Harbin. I'm a member of the PIN Education Task Force and several other organizations working alongside parents like me to elevate our voices and collaborate with the district to achieve our common goals for student success. Authentic parent involvement requires active participation by parents in the critical decisions that hold enormous consequences for our children. This month, PPS administration has chosen not to present the Woolslayer magnet proposal to the Board of Education for a vote. To me, this decision was stunning. The fully engaged, authentically engaged Woolslayer parents and teachers came up with an innovative plan that will attract families back to the district and grow enrollment. Now administration has delayed the vote and put the program in jeopardy. Woolslayer parents are devastated, but so are parents at other schools. You have sent a clear message to all Pittsburgh Public School parents: don't bother. Furthermore, what story are you telling the public at large? Innovation versus devastation. Here are two recent Post-Gazette headlines. The first is from a few days ago: "Steam 21st Century Skills Change the World." The second headline: "Pittsburgh Public Schools: Cautious, Broke by 2017." Please, send the Woolslayer magnet proposal to the Board tomorrow for a vote. We can't wait. The magnet options are already out there. The magnet process has begun. Equally important, PPS administration has asked the Board to vote on an MOU with A+ Schools and their Parent Nation program to operate in 10 schools for the purpose of promoting parent engagement. I fully support the work A+ Schools is doing to elevate voices of underserved parents. However, they are one of many Pittsburgh organizations doing this work with parents. Why is it necessary to have an MOU? Authentic parent engagement is growing and happening in Pittsburgh Public Schools. Look at Woolslayer, for example. Giving A+ an MOU and mandating that at least five parents will hold new leadership positions within the school: PTO, PTA, EFA, Title I, that's unethical and it's not necessary to do this work. I'm also concerned that A+ Schools will have access to confidential student data in the 10 schools, even with a confidentiality agreement. I hope the district will allow parents to opt out of sharing this data with A+ Schools if it comes to that. Please, vote no for the A+ Schools MOU and vote yes for a Woolslayer STEAM magnet. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Calazie?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you once again. As all of you know, I've served 12 years on this board, previous to last December. I'm a little disappointed with something that has happened in the recent couple of months that I think should have been very publicized, not just to the parents by going through a package that you send home to the parents, but to the public in itself. You've changed your phone numbers. You've had major problems with your phones. And I, as a previous board member, didn't know you changed your phone number. It should have been frontline news in the media, that the Pittsburgh Public Schools were changing their phone number. That you have parents that are coming into this system. How would they reach you? How would they know? Now, I understand that you have a situation where you're going to change the... or, I'm sorry, you're going to call the 622 extension and it's going to transfer over. You also went through a period of time where that wasn't happening. People were being disconnected. I had no idea. I called to find out because I had been getting some complaints from parents because, for some reason, people do not understand the difference between Terry Kennedy, Teresa Calazie, and Teresa Kel Smith. Unfortunately, I can't do anything about that, but I think that you guys can. You have a communications and marketing department that should have made it very clear to the public what was going on, and should have been very clear at telling the public how it was going to take place. The number one thing I want to express to all of you, I have told all of you many times, if you need any assistance, I'd be more than willing to help any and all of you. I've been there for you before. I would be here for you now. But I am beginning to think that most of you are not reading your agenda review and then reading your legislative books, because I see things that I wonder why you're not questioning or you're voting on and not wondering why. For example, you hired a new communications and marketing person. You now have three people, I believe, working in that department, if I'm not mistaken. That person should maybe be part of the communications and marketing of telling people that you changed the phone numbers. It's an issue. It's an issue that I've been dealing with, and I've spoken to quite a few of you personally about it. I've told you some of the dilemmas I've dealt with. I've tried to explain to you that you have to let the public know what you're doing. You have to be transparent. You can't say you're going to be transparent and then you're not.
Thank you so much, Ms. Calazie. We appreciate your time. Thank you. Speaker number three, Ms. Castillo?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I stand here before you to address the importance and continuation and advancement of the A+ Program for Pittsburgh Public School System. About a year ago, I was introduced to the program while becoming involved within my grandchildren's PTO at Grandview Elementary School. Within the first meeting, I was enriched with an abundance of information about the A+ Program and was made aware of their mission and purpose. Upon learning about the program, I became an active member in spreading the word of A+ Program and helping for the mission to move steps closer towards being fulfilled. The A+ Program has an obligation to educate parents on their vitality in their child's education. Education can be easily mistaken to be solely the job of a teacher or an adult figure in school. However, with the help of the parents, more children can improve their cognitive development. Having parents and teachers on the same page will allow children to thrive in a successful educational background, allowing them to truly grow and flourish in the knowledge of education. The A+ Program strives to involve parents and show them how they can be active in a successful future for their child. The program makes parents more aware of educational opportunities and radiates compassion for families in all types of circumstances. I have never met a bunch of people who can be so passionate about helping students and parents of low-income backgrounds to show the kids that they have the potential to achieve greatness. But it starts with their efforts in the classroom. I am grateful and appreciative of this program, and I be more involved in my grandchildren's education. And because of the program, I have been able to see my grandchildren become brighter and wanting to learn more and more daily. I hope that all of you can see the great things that this program has done and will support the program to continue to help our community. I would like to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Our next four speakers are Dr. Sandra Woolley, Kewana Andrews, and number six, Dewayne Barker.
Good evening. I'm a district resident, a retired educator, and a grandparent of an eighth-grade Pittsburgh Public School student. I also have served on Colfax PSCC and also as an EFA representative. I'm here this evening representing PIN, the Pennsylvania Interfaith Impact Network. I'm also here supporting Woolslayer, parents and teachers who have worked hard to develop the idea of a STEAM program for their school. Pittsburgh Public School has encouraged parents' involvement in their children's education. I quote from your website: "We believe that partnerships amongst schools, families, and community groups are a necessity in creating a successful academic and social experience for your children." Woolslayer parents, teachers, and community members have been involved. I believe they deserve an opportunity to present their ideas to the Board. As elected officials, I believe you should have the opportunity to vote on the Woolslayer proposal in a timely fashion. I understand that they were promised a spot on the Board's agenda in August and September, and now they must wait until October or later. It is urgent that Woolslayer receive a timely hearing. We all know that parents are visiting other magnet schools and making choices for the next school year. Applications, according to the website, are due December 2nd. PIN supports community schools model, where parents are an integral part of the decision-making for improving their school. The Pittsburgh Public School administration must allow all stakeholders to collaborate with the district in creating a vision for our schools. PIN, this year, and nine other Pittsburgh organizations are participating in a grant program that will train 50 people as parent leaders. Parents will learn how to engage other parents in their respective schools. PIN is focusing on Westinghouse, working with Westinghouse parents. Parents will not bother to get involved if they are blocked from presenting their ideas. The Woolslayer proposal should be put back on your agenda for tomorrow evening. The Woolslayer community has a well-thought-out plan for creating a STEAM magnet. As our elected officials, you should have the choice to vote on their proposal. Thank you.
Hi, Valerie Allman, Woolslayer parent. Back in December, you gave us a second chance. You told us to go out, figure out a plan that works for the district, and save ourselves. We jumped in headfirst, determined to make our school a Cinderella story. We came together as a community and, for the very first time, decided together what we want for our kids. We wanted STEAM, but not only STEAM because that wasn't enough to solve the enrollment problem and the district's financial problem. We need a STEAM magnet. We followed your timeline and dedicated our time to go beyond what was required to make this plan successful. We took classes, reached out to STEAM-related organizations, and did research to prepare ourselves. We were even invited to be part of a grant with South Fayette, which would have paid for our STEAM program, but we were forced to decline because of the procedure we were required to follow. We submitted our proposal on time at the beginning of August and waited patiently for the Board to vote, but we never made the agenda. We are told that we wouldn't miss the magnet list because it was going to be pushed back a month so the Board and Dr. Lane could consider the proposal and investigate finances, and that we would be on September's agenda, but we were lied to. The magnet list and applications were released, and we haven't been included on the agenda for two straight months. We recently heard that it's Dr. Lane's intention to make another school the STEAM magnet and give our school STEAM emphasis. I hope this isn't true because the idea would not solve the problem we are facing. It would set us up for failure with the limited funding and staff we have been given. This is not what we have been fighting for. We have fought too hard and for too long to get this consolation prize. This Board is made up of intelligent, qualified elected officials that are supposed to vote on this proposal. Dr. Lane, I understand that you were looking for funding. However, if you had taken the time to call one of us back over the spring or summer or reached out to us, we could have worked together to secure that grant with South Fayette, and we wouldn't have had to delay this proposal. Now, we're being told that it won't be until October, at the earliest, before this proposal will reach the Board. This delay has robbed us all. If this proposal is approved, Woolslayer has been robbed of the possible applicants that have already filed. The families in Pittsburgh have been robbed of a choice, and the district has been robbed of precious time to bring families back to this district. Dr. Lane, we ask you for your honesty, respect, and that the Board is able to do their job. We want the chance we were promised last December, and Dr. Lane, please commit to putting Woolslayer on the agenda no later than October. This delay puts us in jeopardy, and it isn't fair to rob us of this right that we have worked so hard for. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Matt Allman?
Hello, I am Matthew Allman, a student from Woolslayer. And Woolslayer is the best school ever, and if anyone tries to close it, I will not be happy. The teachers are the best, and if Dr. Lane can hear me, you need to keep Woolslayer open. I want the school to be a STEAM magnet because I can do really cool things in school, ever, I mean, even cooler than the stuff we already do. See you later.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening. My name is Larry Erlich, and I'm chairman of Northside Leadership Education Committee. Over the last five years, our committee has been devoted to discovering ways to make our Northside schools more creative, competitive, and desirable. At present, only 50% of all Northside family use our neighborhood schools, and six of our seven schools fell within the bottom 15% of state testing. These realities need to change. We feel confident that change has already started. Though we had experienced some disagreements with the district, especially in the early years, the last year and a half has proven a time of cooperation. This was most obvious this past June 11th, one of the last days of the school year, during our Meet the Principals gathering at the Warhol. All seven schools were represented. In addition, representing the district were Dr. Sims, Dr. Holly, and Ms. Klug. At that gathering were also the director of the Warhol, Carnegie Science Center, the Mattress Factory, the Manchester Craftsman, the Center for the Arts, the Gateway to the Arts, the City of Asylum, and the Beul Foundation. The commitment of all the participants was obvious when, after nearly three hours of discussion on one of the last days of the school year, we had to kick everyone out in order for the Warhol to close. All these science and art resource centers expressed their desire to work with our schools. For example, Jason Brown, the director, the educational director of the Carnegie, has contacted all Northside schools attempting to plan ways to bring scientists and astronauts to our schools. It is our hope that with the assistance of the Beul and the other foundations, we will be able to incorporate these unique resources for all our students. We want this not to be just a show-and-tell field trip, but we want them to actually interact with the basic curriculum. A model of this was demonstrated this summer when third graders at Manchester Elementary School learned math using the horticultural skills at the Manchester Craftsman. In addition, we are very pleased that the district has hired Major Augustine, a dynamic leader for the JROTC program. We have supported his program with funds while introducing him to General Jones of Outdoor Odyssey and other supporters. Major Augustine has already doubled the number of cadets at Perry. We value... we trust that he will be provided with the resources so he can further expand this valuable program. Our committee also will continue to support Mr. Sapp and Mr. Kennedy's math and music tutoring at Manchester School along with Calvary United Methodist reading tutors. The after-school programs at Morrow, from Project Destiny and the Y, have been a great addition, that along with the reduction of class size in kindergarten and first grade, and the increased use of Rooney, reducing the number of children...
Thank you so much. We have your testimony, and thank you for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kathy McElloggy. I'm a special education teacher at Woolslayer Elementary, and I am once again here in support of Woolslayer community's proposal to become a STEAM magnet for the 2015-2016 school year. We want to make sure that we are able to obtain magnet status for our STEAM program for two main reasons. First, a magnet will allow Woolslayer to rebuild its once-booming enrollment. Second, as a school with a poverty rate over 90%, it will allow for socioeconomic integration of the school. This, along with early childhood education, is the only educational intervention known to have a greater return on investment, according to researcher Richard Callenberg. I was pleased to hear Dr. Lane be so supportive of the STEAM program for Woolslayer in Saturday's Post-Gazette article. And it seems that there has been a lack of clear communication between Central Office and the Woolslayer community regarding the proposal. Some people felt that they were being brushed aside because of this, and it has damaged trust with some in the community. We've had some communication with board members as we have developed our proposal. However, there has only been communication with Central Office during these short presentations at public hearings. This results in you hearing from us, but not us hearing from you. We haven't formally met in any other way, even though we have had many meetings and several community events. These are some things that you may not know. Knowing the financial situation of the district, we worked very hard to keep costs to a minimum without impacting the quality of the program's implementation. Second, we had offers of partnerships and funding that we could not accept without Board approval of the program. Had we been in communication with each other, we would have been able to share this information. Going forward, it is my hope that the STEAM magnet program that the Woolslayer community has envisioned is implemented with fidelity and that the wishes and intentions of the community remain intact. Let's foster communication between the district and the community so that we are not left guessing about what is happening and trust can be rebuilt. We have the potential to be a model school for the district. This is an innovative program created by the community for the community. It could be a model school to demonstrate how community input draws in families and encourages trust between the district and the community. Built in 1897 and going through many renewals, Woolslayer has been an elementary school, a middle school, a gifted center, and once again an elementary school. We can once again be reinvented as a STEAM magnet program for the 2015-2016 school year. Like the phoenix of Greek mythology, Woolslayer will once again rise to greatness. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Mr. Canning?
Good evening, school board members. My name is John Canning. I'm a resident of the Northside, of the central Northside. And over the past year, several of my fellow Northside neighbors have had the opportunity to come and speak with you about our concerns about the public schools on the Northside and the impact that the schools have on our youngsters and on our communities as well. It's our desire and your desire, I know this to be the case, is to improve the programs in all the schools in the city. To those of us on the Northside Committee, we focus our attention primarily on Northside schools for the benefit of the children who attend those schools and for the stability and the growth of the neighborhoods in which those schools are located. Over the past year or so, we spoke to you of the need to keep schools with small enrollments open. We were particularly concerned about the future of Manchester School and the Manchester community and of the Schiller Middle School. We sense that those same concerns, or I sense that those concerns, are evident in the desire that I hear tonight of the parents of the children at Woolslayer School to keep their small but effective school open. We on the Northside experienced the fact that when Mann and Chatham Schools were closed, it led almost solely to the creation of the charter school that's now located in the Columbus School Building. And as I attended these meetings last year, I truly sensed it was the closing of Bergwin School on Hazelwood that led to the creation of a privately operated charter school in Hazelwood because the parents of the community want the school. They didn't want a charter school. They wanted a school. And so, too often, my experiences in the city, the charter schools do nothing miraculous. They simply step in and fill the void when schools are closed. However, on the position, there's a positive side of this ledger. And I want to acknowledge the work that Dr. Lane and Dr. Sims have had in working with our Northside Committee in our combined interest to improve programs in several Northside elementary schools. And in many ways, what my neighbor and friend Larry Erlich just spoke to you about, of some of the programs that we've been working on. We're particularly concerned with the work that we felt has occurred at Perry High School, which is now the only high school on the Northside. Our meetings with members of this school board, as well as members of Central Administration, principals, teachers, parents, and students, have resulted in everyone's efforts to improve the schools in all levels. We see this as a first step, but certainly not the last step. We see this in the beginning of a process that will grow and grow and increase the size and the effectiveness and the test scores of the students who attend Northside schools. Thank you.
Good evening, Board.
Thank you so much for your time.
My name is April Joy Payne. I'm here representing the Pittsburgh Faison Elementary on Tyoga Street. I am the president of our PTO there. I currently have a fourth grader with an IEP in behavior at that Faison School. And I have a son who is at the Pittsburgh Kappa with IEP with reading and math. I am here to explain to you why our A+ Schools mean so much to me. I'm here spending time with you on my son's 15th birthday because this A+ Schools is not just an organization, it is a family. They are there to help us when we have no other help. We can't seem to find help. When we need education tools for our children, the A+ Schools, they find a way for us. They help us find a way so that we can support our schools and our children. They are there to help support us when we have issues with our children behavior-wise. We have new people in our district who are... they're not bilingual yet. They're completely Spanish. They can't understand. They are working towards getting them instructors so that they can understand and help their children succeed. A+ Schools is not just an organization. It is our family. Our children need it. Our children need it so that they can continue to help us, continue to make sure that our children are a productive person in our society. But us as parents, as the teachers, we need help. And we don't have help because our teachers, our educators, they are there to do that job. And A+ Schools, they are there, and they do the job that no one else can. And they mean more to us than what you could ever know. And if you don't help us, we'll be back. You can't get rid of us because we need them. So you'll see us again. Thank you, and you have a blessed day.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next two speakers are number 13, David Brigan, number 14, Darius Allman.
Good evening. My name is Dave Brigan. This is Tina Russell. She's a parent leader with us at Arsenal. I'm a community organizer with Lawrenceville United's PEPP Rally program. PEPP Rally is a program that aims to rally parents and community partners to support and strengthen our neighborhood Pittsburgh Public Schools with a focus on Arsenal Elementary, Arsenal Middle School, and Woolslayer Elementary. We do this by engaging and empowering parents to be agents of positive change and by creating partnerships to fuel community-supported initiatives. Since starting this program a year ago, we've had great support for the program from Pittsburgh Public Schools, staff at Central Office, our school board members, and especially our outstanding principals and staff at Arsenal and Woolslayer. The core idea of PEPP Rally is that kids are best served when schools, families, and communities work together. So we place a very high value on these relationships, and we're grateful to have this partnership. So thank you. I wanted to speak tonight in support of A+ Schools' parent-led program and their Parent Nation program. When PEPP Rally first got off the ground, A+ Schools provided us with a lot of technical support to help us get to the place we are today. Parent Nation was and continues to be a model for PEPP Rally in how it has supported parents at Pittsburgh Public Schools to amplify their voice, share in decision-making, and to make a positive difference, especially in our most vulnerable schools. I've gotten to see a lot of Parent Nation and the outstanding parent leaders that make it up, and I've been nothing but impressed. A+ Schools doesn't just talk about empowering parents. They really live it. Last year, I had the opportunity to sit in when the Parent Network at Pittsburgh King kicked off their parent-led program to create a structured and meaningful way for parents to be regularly involved inside the school, supporting teachers and building their capacity as leaders. After seeing the positive energy of the parents and their commitment to working hand-in-hand with school staff to affect positive change, and this is something that had to spread to other schools, we're proud to be working with A+ Schools this year to develop our own parent-led program designed and run by parents. I support this program and think that every school should want it. Lastly, I wanted to express my excitement that the district staff and the school board are working with the parents of Woolslayer to consider their proposal. The parents of Woolslayer have worked extremely hard... The parents of Woolslayer have worked extremely hard for months to really think hard about the kind of education they want to see for their kids. They've visited other schools, polled other parents, held meetings, built partnerships, and even attended professional development alongside teachers. This kind of dedication and input from parents should be greatly valued, and the STEAM programs that they've advocated for show the kind of innovation and engaging, hands-on, and blended learning that make learning relevant to students and that families and our communities get excited about. I commend the work that they've done, and I commend you guys listening to them, and I urge the district and the Board to invite this kind of participation and partnership moving forward because we're all better when we work together. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Number 14, Mr. Allman?
Dr. Lane, members of the Board, my name is Darius Allman. I'm a parent of a third-grade student at Woolslayer. You already heard him speak earlier this evening. For the past year, the parents, the students, the members of the community, the teachers and the administrators of Woolslayer have tried very hard to get Woolslayer to become a STEAM magnet school. These people have put in countless hours, have moved mountains to bring a very viable proposal to this Board. Sadly, these efforts have been pushed to the wayside time and time again by this Board and by the superintendent. The time is now to act. This STEAM magnet program is very important, not only to these kids, but to the community in general. Woolslayer has been a staple of the Bloomfield community for almost 100 years, if not longer. Our children deserve better than what they're getting. Our community deserves better than what we're getting handed to us. The time to act is now. I am calling out to this Board, to Superintendent Lane, make this proposal happen. We are sick of the games, we are sick of the runaround, we are sick of being shoved to the back burner. This is the time to act. This month, put Woolslayer's STEAM proposal on your agenda. That's all we ask for, that's all we've ever asked for. The time to make it happen is right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have two speakers who were not in attendance. I'll read their name. Number five, Kiwana Andrews. And Mr. Dewayne, Mr. Dewayne Barker, are you here?
My name is Kiwana Andrews, and I'm a parent of five children who attend Pittsburgh Public Schools. I'm a member of A-plus Schools' Parent Nation, and I'm the vice chair of the parent group at Pittsburgh King. I'm here today to speak to you about the importance of renewing the MOU between you, the district, and A-plus Schools. As a parent who had a bad experience with the school system a few years back, I was very excited about the fact that the school district had, excuse me, was taking a stand to make a difference in the education system by allowing the opportunity for parents to play active roles in their children's education. The fact that parents will be permitted to actually help and make a difference in school climate and be the helping hands to the most important people in our children's lives were the two main factors that made me want to commit myself to making time to take, excuse me, time to stand in the gap. Because of the MOU between the district and A-plus Schools and because of the empowerment and education provided to me by being a member of A-plus Schools' Parent Nation, I decided to register my children back into the school district after homeschooling them for five years. I'm asking that the district renew the MOU with A-plus Schools, excuse me. I'm asking that the district renew the MOU with A-plus Schools and continue to allow parents to be active in the schools that their children attend. If you do this, you will be stating to the parents who represent PPS that our voice does matter and that you recognize that our help is needed and appreciated. You will show us that signing last year's MOU was not just a way to pacify us and to keep us quiet for a year, but an honest attempt to collaborate with us in order to ensure that the education, safety, and welfare of all of our children are important to you. So often, it's said that parents don't care, but the truth is, we do care and we want to play a role in our children's education. We may not show up for every meeting, and we may not have the ability to be at all the events, but our lack of opportunity should not be mistaken for not caring. It should instead be the open door for better opportunities and ways to eliminate the barriers that we have in order for us to be more involved. The parent-led program has enabled many parents who, because of many different reasons, couldn't to volunteer at their children's school and participate in community events created for parents and children in the district. Although there is much needed, much work needed to be done to improve many aspects of the education system, it is my belief that allowing parents the ability to take active leading roles in our schools is one step closer to a more positive public school system. In any, I will say that parenting and education go hand-in-hand, and without a collaborative understanding of our children's needs, there is no way to guarantee success for them all. We, the parents, need this MOU to be signed in order to help pave the way for equality.
Thank you so much for coming out. We're glad you were able to make it. Mr. Sumter, I believe this concludes the testimony for tonight.
I'd just like to thank everyone who has come out this evening and ask that you please stay engaged with the Pittsburgh Public School. At this time, this public hearing is now adjourned. Be safe and have a good evening.